We'll go ahead and call our work session to order. We appreciate everybody doing, being here. I'm sure the other two will come in. I know Mr. Reader's probably delayed with the start of school. Oh, Mr. Reader's got COVID, okay. Well, he not gonna be here. Yeah, we choose he not come. So we'll go ahead and get started. Let the record reflect. We do have a quorum available for the meeting so we can begin. Item number one on our agenda is the discussion of the South Carolina Community Development Block Grant and the possible submission of funding request in September of 2024. Mr. Shakur.
Good afternoon, everybody.
Good afternoon.
Good to see everybody. And of course, be thinking about Travis, too. I know he's not feeling well. Well, we just, and we're bringing it up on the screen now. I just, Google Maps seemed about the easiest thing to use to illustrate this. But, so the Community Development Block Grant, CDBG, everything a government has an acronym, is a funding program that has been really beneficial to Newberry in particular. It's something that the city has used extensively over the years. And Whitmire to do projects that, you know, benefit the community. And there's a wide variety of things that can be done with that funding source. I know Whitmire, well, and the city, too, have used it extensively with rehabbing their water and sewer system. They've also used it to make improvements in their downtown. And in addition to municipalities being eligible for this funding source, we are. And so right now, I think you all know, we've got a active CDBG project underway in Whitmire. We're finalizing the design now. There's some acquisition of property that is necessary for that sidewalk. And we're, and that actually is something, by the way, that will come to y'all next meeting. We're gonna need you to sign off on the method that's being used for that. But that's to construct a sidewalk on Gary Street and Supertown Lane. So that's underway. We've got the ability to have up to two grants at one time. They call it a threshold requirement. We can't exceed the threshold. And so we can, we can have two. We're limited, though, in where we can use those funds. And so the, this is HUD money that is distributed to the states. At the state of South Carolina, the Department of Commerce administers this funding program. And what, more specifically, they're administering is a competitive grants program. And so as a non-entitlement community, where, you know, we don't, an entitlement receives their funding directly from HUD in Washington, we have to compete for funds through this competitive program. The money can only be used to benefit low and moderate income communities and/or direct beneficiaries that lower, are low and moderate income. And what, and the acronym for that is LMI. And what LMI is, it's on a household basis, not a family basis. Because there's how, when you're dealing with the census, there's household data, and then there's family data. So we're talking about household here. What has to happen is that, that your households, their income level can be no greater than 80% of the county median household income. So you use the county median. The beneficiaries have to be 80% or less of that. Unless you qualify a project at the community level, in which case, the community has to be 51% or greater LMI in order to be able to qualify it on the basis of the community. Some new data came out. And Whitmire had historically been low and moderate income at the city level. They dipped below that for a five-year period, because this is something that's evaluated every five years. Now they are back at majority LMI, meaning a majority of their households meet the LMI requirement or exceed it. Therefore, a project can be qualified based on the city's data as opposed to having to go out and income survey every household that might benefit from the project. And so because we're limited to essentially only Whitmire, where we can do a project like this, we wondered how receptive council would be to staff submitting, at this point, a request for an application. The way CDBG at Commerce works is there is a mid-August deadline to request an application. If they give you an application, that's basically their determination that the project's eligible and that you're eligible. Then you apply for funding, which is due in the middle of September. And then an award would, would be, you'd receive notification of an award in December. And I always kind of laughed if the letter's from the Secretary of Commerce, you didn't get the grant. If it's from the governor's office, you got it. So you kind of know when you get in the envelope.
Still something that you don't have to take if you get awarded that, too, right?
And is it a timeline that something has to be completed if you get the grant? Is it a timeline you have to use?
So you've got 24 months. Now, you can request an extension. Yeah, and we're, we're into, trying to think now, with the sidewalk project, I believe we're in month 18. So we're kind of under the gun. The construction should go fairly quickly. It was the design and all that, and this acquisition that kind of slowed us down a little bit. If we have to get an extension, though, we can. And I guess one of the concepts we were looking at, and this is sort of where this map comes into play, is I think the town has done a really good job of streetscaping, you know, Main Street here. It's a nice, clean look. And it, you know, it was done quite a while ago, but it's aged really well. You know, sometimes you see these areas that are streetscaped, and they just don't, they don't last that long. I think theirs really has held up well. The concept here that we would propose to y'all, and we've had some conversations with the town, because obviously this is their downtown, what this does mainly is it frees them up to continue pursuing funding for water and sewer upgrades. Whereas, and then we could knock out a project that would tie in with the Capital Project Sales Tax project in Whitmire, which is the City Gym. And so the concept, I guess, that we were batting around and wanted to run by y'all is they've got a great look on here on Main Street. Your bookends are, well, there's the retail strip here, but you've got Town Hall here. So you've got, you know, retail, Town Hall is an anchor, and then the Town Hall Annex, which was also a CPST project. You know, we've just completed construction of the building behind Town Hall, which was part of the 2016 CPST. And then you've got here, if you can see it, is the City Gym, which is the 22, 2022 CPST project. We thought that a project scope of Central Alley.
I don't mean to interrupt, and across the street is the Fire Department, where both city and county fire equipment is kept.
That's a great point, yeah. You've got the fire department right here.
With the oranges-looking roof is the Fire Department.
Yeah. And this is Town Public Works, the building we've just finished, Town Hall, City Gym, and their tennis courts there. And the concept would be, you know, unless, you know, there's something y'all would prefer that we do otherwise, would be just trying to create a connection through sidewalk, particularly some asphalt work, some additional parking, lighting, probably some landscaping, street trees, running from Market Street down to Glen, a connection here along Gillum. And then if you look here, if we can at least come down to this point, down Glen, we can tie in with the Gary Street project that we're currently doing. So, and, and I know in talking with Mayor Hollinsworth that there's some interest that they have in pursuing funding to renovate the community center. And so, you know, we're, we need to estimate the cost of the project to determine what can be done within the grant and the required minimum match. But it may even be possible to do a short leg here down to the community center, which sets the table for that project. You know, this would be wonderful if this would be something that we could do throughout the county. But unfortunately, the only place we can really do it is within the town of Whitmire. And that kind of ties in with the next item on the agenda. When we get to it, I'd be glad to kind of brief y'all on it.
That's bad, but it's good for Whitmire.
Yeah, yeah.
It certainly, and just in full disclosure, my first concern when we even began any discussions of this, and administrator will bear out this, is that if we go in there and do something there, then our other municipalities would be concerned about why we did something in one town and not the other. Well, first, the grant statistics will bear it out. Second is, we both had a conversation with the mayor, and I plan on following up with it in much more detail, is that the town would have to be part of that match as well. That the county can't go in there and max the money in chief for, for the whole town. The town would have to, to.
Ante up something.
Yeah, come to it. But we also could look at the highways, the road committee. Tim Carroll carries that. They, yeah, CTC, they did the match for the sidewalk project for us. And so the former mayor, Whitmire, chairs that. So it may be that they would fund the match for that, and neither one of us would have to do that. So.
I assume these are state roads?
Yes, they are. Everything in there is state road. That is correct. So. But as Vice Chair Shealy correctly pointed out, even if we investigate this, if we get it and everybody else goes, no, the county's got to fund the whole thing, we can go, nah, never mind. Then if you don't, if you don't want it any worse than that, then we can't, we can't fund the whole thing. Because that's just a, in my mind, sets a negative precedence to, to the rest of the communities. So.
What, what is the percentage match? Is it 80, 20, 50, 50?
So this is, so this is a 90, 10. And so the maximum award, now, there's a waiver that you can apply for, but the maximum is $750,000. And so if you max the grant out without requesting a waiver, because then, you know, you could potentially exceed 750, but if you stuck with a 750 ceiling, you maxed it out, your, your match would be 75,000. So you're looking at a, what, an $825,000 project.
A lot of money for nothing.
Yes. Yeah. And, and we just thought there is just a great opportunity to connect all of these, you know, key, key facilities, sort of anchors, like anchors downtown, and then connect to the project we're currently working on. And again, it keeps them free to do their thing in terms of applying for water and sewer funding.
I think it's a great idea.
And there's some, when you look at.
Is that right?
I apologize for being late, and I don't want you to have to go through everything. But if we're gonna take a vote, I need to know what we're voting about.
We're not gonna vote.
We were talking, this is a potential Community Development Block Grant opportunity. And we got some news, and this kind of ties in with the next item on the agenda. You know, for 40 to 50 years, the city of Newberry has been identified as citywide low and moderate income, meaning, and it was always a slim majority. I mean, we, you know, the city was like 51-point-whatever percent of the households in town had 80% or less of the median household income of the county. That's the LMI definition. You're 80% of the county household income or less. And it's all, and there are different numbers, like, is it a family of one, family of two, family of three, and the household income goes up accordingly. We found out here a couple of weeks ago, because a thought was, hey, we could do this same kind of thing to support the amphitheater project and can, and create a connection to the square and probably look also at shaving some of the edges from an expense standpoint off of the amphitheater project. And then we find out the city is now 50.6%. And I thought, oh, okay. Because I thought the key number was 50%. Well, it turns out they don't round up. And the key is you got to be over 51%.
They didn't qualify.
Yeah, so it doesn't qualify now. So it's been 40, 50 years that that was a given.
Well, we just need to move a few people around.
Redraw them city limits. One more, just a slip of the pen, and you can change that.
Yeah. And then Whitmire did a bit of a boomerang. They have been LMI like Newberry for many, many years. And then for, because they revisit this every five years, the statistics. Whitmire actually became citywide non-LMI for five years. But now they're back, and the percentage, I want to say, is in the 60s. So you, I think you can tell there's some survey and statistical probably issues, you know. So they're eligible again now. And so this concept was, well, you know, we could potentially do something similar to what we've talked about with the amphitheater, support the City Gym project, also connect to the sidewalk that we're currently working on, on Gary Street now, and kind of connect all these dots. You've got the City Gym, you've got Town Hall, the Town Hall Annex, the community center on Glen Street there, and the sidewalk we're building. And we may be able to create all these connections with new sidewalks, lighting, street trees, and it would allow the town to continue to pursue water and sewer rehab with their money, because they've, they've been doing a lot of line replacements and system upgrades. And they could continue doing that.
Well, only 10 grand is hard to turn down. Might be worth trying for.
Yeah, that's better than stock market.
That's right.
Exactly, exactly.
It's worth trying.
Any other questions? Sounds like it's pretty unanimous to go ahead and, at least do the investigatory and ask for the application and move forward for next.
That sounds great. What we'll do is we'll start estimating the cost of the project, request the application. That would be next week. The application, if we're awarded one, we have to request one first to confirm we're eligible, basically. The application would be due in late September, and we would need to adopt a resolution committing to the local match. And I know we talked about, and we've already had those conversations with the mayor, so we could go ahead and solidify that with them on the front end. Then, like you said, there may be a CTC opportunity there, too.
Approach the CTC and ask their thoughts in advance, too, maybe.
Yeah, we could definitely do that. And, and you never know, but I know in the past they've been very receptive to helping, yeah, our communities with, with doing that. So.
Okay. All right. Item number two, which is intertwined to a certain extent, discussion of the Southeast Crescent Regional Commission and the possible submission of requests for funding through the SCRC's Competitive Grants Program.
Okay, well, this one kind of builds on the first item. So right now, I changed the map. This is downtown Newberry now. And you can see that we're here where the cursor is. And here's the old Jacobs Carports building that we now own. And we own all of the property from the old Hatton Street, you know, it's an old abandoned city street, all the way up to Harrington. I know it's down on the map, but uphill to Harrington Street. And the city owns from Hatton all the way down to Scotts Creek, to the Army Corps project area, when the, when the creek was channelized back in the late 80s, early 90s. The concept, you know, was to take advantage with the CPST project of the topography here and to, and to build the amphitheater stage essentially down on the property that is north of 10th Street and maybe into the 10th Street right away. Of course, 10th Street would go away. And then to take advantage of the topography here for the seating, the amphitheater seating. One of the, I think, things that would be really beneficial to the project, and I know, I know the city feels likewise, would be to establish some physical connections to the amphitheater project. And the streets we're really dealing with for those connections are Caldwell and McKibben. And I think y'all know pretty well, you know, being downtown a lot, that, you know, there's a pretty, there's a fair amount of streetscaping that's been done along McKibben to this point. These parking lots, they've got some age on them, but had been addressed. There's decorative lighting, there's some trees. Caldwell Street has not been addressed. And we were hopeful that CDBG could potentially be used for that. And then when you look at this, you know, there's a tremendous amount of, which is necessary, tremendous amount of fencing that was part of the CPST project scope. Because if you got an amphitheater and you're charging tickets for major events, you got to have controlled access. And so the concept, or at least what was estimated, was, you know, these brick columns, and then you've got the anodized aluminum that's black, that looks like wrought iron, you know, between the, the columns. We might be able, with the grant, at least some of the thought was that we could shave some of the edges off of the project, the CPST project, from an expense standpoint, and maybe cover them with the grant. Because, you know, with cost increases and inflation, it might be necessary to bring project within budget. We found out that CP, CDBG, for the grant purposes, is a non-go. It's a non-starter in Newberry. Unless, we're kind of trying to pursue some appeals of that, but I don't really know that there are any avenues for that. So we started thinking, okay, well, what in the world could we do in terms of bringing some additional grant money in for, for this project? And there's a new entity that's been created. I don't know if y'all have ever heard of the Appalachian Regional Commission, but ARC was created basically to address poverty in the Appalachian region and its many states, you know, in that region that, that ARC covers. In South Carolina, it's basically the I-85 corridor. So it's all the counties at I-85 traverses plus O'Conne that are in ARC. A recent creation, though, was in the southern states that have ARC territory, was to take the rest of those states, so North Carolina, South Carolina, Georgia, Florida, Alabama, I don't think it goes any further than that, and create another commission that would cover the rest of those states. And it's called the Southeast Crescent, because it looks like a crescent, Regional Commission. And they have a grant program. They made awards about two weeks ago. And in evaluating those awards, a couple of them were streetscape projects, kind of like what we're talking about here. There were some different, other different types of projects that they funded. It seemed pretty clear, looking at them, that the awards would be significantly less than like the 750 you can get with CDBG. But I think it'd probably be unreasonable to expect you could get more than, say, 350,000. So it may be difficult to do McKibben and Caldwell, but if y'all are comfortable, because we don't know when there will be another Notice of Funding Availability issued by the federal government. We don't know when that will be. But if y'all are comfortable with it, we could at least start making some plans for addressing Caldwell Street. And I guess the concept that we've discussed with the city would be, Caldwell's one of those in-and-out streets. And so south of the Boyce Street intersection is in the city. That had to be taken out when the original streetscape was done with the Opera House project, because, you know, the bricks were exposed. And so it came out of state maintenance. The state has it all the way from Boyce down to the creek here. And so one of the concepts we thought was repaving the street, installing a very wide sidewalk, because you're going to have a good bit of foot traffic trying to get down to the amphitheater, decorative lights, street trees to eventually have some shade down there. And then there's a little bit of overhead telecom and electric. It's mainly a street lighting circuit that would be good to get underground. And then have some power hookups. You know, if you wanted to do food trucks or whatever you would do out, out in the street there. The state, of course, we would need to take it out of state maintenance. I would imagine they would be receptive to that. And then, you know, you could also have the ability to put the bollards in when you have an event. You would just have the, you know, the place in, the pavement where, you know, you take the cap off and you could put them in. And make it pedestrian-only. It seems to me that you could get at least an initial phase of that done with a grant through the Southeast Crescent.
I doubt it would be like an 80, 20, though, right?
I think it's 90, 10 also. We'll check on that and get that information.
The city would be probably.
Even 80, 20.
Oh, yeah. I agree.
That would more than offset the savings we would have from our CPST.
Absolutely.
And that's gonna.
And the city would probably help with the matching.
I think they would, yeah. Jason, the new city manager, seemed really receptive to it. And, and I don't know now, you know, they, they may approach some projects differently, but, you know, they may have the ability to run a lot of the conduit and the electric. And we just have to talk through some of those. There may be some ways to kind of pare the cost of the project down. But I remember back in the day, we would pour the, basically the footing for the decorative lights with the right bolt pattern and, you know.
Anytime you can get a 90, 10 grant, you need to try to go for it.
That's right. And, and we are working, you know, the amphitheater project is a joint project between the city and the county. And that Caldwell Street, even as a state-owned street, as Jeff mentioned, that's going to be a major access to the amphitheater. So anything we can do there, that.
My daughter used to live on Caldwell. Apartments.
Good research.
I know all about it.
That's right. What, what incredible information, Jeff, that you've been able to provide us with on both these, and also the vision to, to see the need and where to apply it. That's really greatly appreciated.
Oh, thanks. Yeah, I appreciate it.
It's time you sign us free money. We'll take it.
That's right.
That's right.
And the need, because you got to match the need to what's available sometimes. Sometimes it's just about finding out what they want and getting something in there, in what they're asking for.
And I guess we're kind of related to this project here. In the timing, I was really hoping that, you know, we could do the CDBG for this with the amphitheater, and we would apply in September and have a funding award in December. But then we really would have a delay doing the project, because you really want to build the amphitheater and get the heavy truck traffic in and out before you start, you know, addressing the aesthetics on the perimeter. So it may work out. But in the meantime, you know, y'all approved, I'm just kind of pointing at the screen, y'all approved a budget in Max Department and Facilities to address the, I've heard it called the Pope Building. I know John Mark Hall's granddaddy had the VET in there, and Mr. Hip mentioned there was a telegraph.
Yeah, that was a.
Little bit of concrete building.
That little concrete building was a Western.
I didn't know that.
Yeah, that was a telegraph office.
Showing your age.
I just think we could.
Yeah, that was actually before my time. I would hope so.
But y'all approved funding for it, so the idea was, unless y'all have any reservation, and we'll, before we do anything, of course, we'll run it back by you, was to go ahead and develop the plan for addressing that building during this budget year, the exterior, interior, the heating and air. It looks like there might be an opportunity for the mural on the side, if that's something y'all would be open to. It's just kind of a blank wall there on a prominent corner. And then we did get good work, a positive word, and of course, it's just the first hurdle. There are other hurdles to clear, but Senator Graham did include $1.2 million in his budget request. request for the Market Basket Building. So, I mean, at least, you know, I mean, before you get to the next, we'll have to clear that one. So at least, you know, we were able to get over that one, but...
Good work.
Yes. Maybe we can just kind of try to pull all that together.
Any questions? All right. Hearing none, item three on the agenda is an executive session for a contractual matter. Discussion of a matter related to the sale of real estate under the appropriate Soccana section of laws. A motion...
I'm making motions. You don't want an executive session.
That was quick. Mr. Sees makes the motion, and Mr. Shealy makes the second. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, all in favor, by show of hands. Opposed likewise. The motion carries unanimously, and we will move into executive session.
Mr. Sees is their discussion. Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands, opposed likewise, let the record show the motion was carried unanimously. Newberry County Council met in executive session for the stated reasons prior to going into executive session, no action was taken during that executive session. Is there a motion? We adjourn our five o'clock meeting. Motion by Mr. Sees, second by Mr. Hilt, is their discussion. Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands, opposed likewise. Motion carries unanimously. We stand adjourned from our five o'clock meeting for two minutes till our six o'clock meeting.
Spare time.
Spare time. Glad to see you all here. What a blessing to have you with us. Would you stand it was we have our invocation and pledge. Mr. Reader is out with COVID, so I usually keep one of those up my sleeves to join with me in prayer. Father God, we thank you for this opportunity to gather, Father, to carry out the business of the people of Newberry County. Father, we pray that you would grant us wisdom and discernment, Lord, that we would make decisions that honor and glorify your kingdom, that we would do what's best for everyone as we seek to serve and honor you, Father, that we may lead this county better, current and for future generations. Lord, we ask that you be with Mr. Reader, Lord, that you would bring speedy healing to him. Lord, we ask it all in Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. Again, it's so nice to see everyone here tonight. Item number one on our agenda is the adoption of the consent agenda. Unless there is objection, we can take items A, B, and C as one item. Without objection, is there a motion that we approve the consent agenda? Motion by Mr. Hilt, second by Mr. Fulmer. Is there a discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands, opposed likewise. That motion carries unanimously. Are there any additions or deletions to the agenda? Hearing none, is there a motion that we adopt the agenda as published? Motion by Mr. Sees, second by Mr. Scurry. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor by show of hands and opposed likewise. That motion carries unanimously. Item number three on our agenda is a public appearance by Ms. Lori Graham of the Newberry area, business consultant, South Carolina Small Business Development Centers.
That's a mouthful.
It is. It's a pleasure to have you with us. Thank you for coming.
Thank you for having me. Thank you for allowing me to introduce myself. I'll just give you a quick overview for anyone who may not be familiar with our organization. We are a nationwide network of folks that provide free counseling and training to small businesses. I am the Newberry consultant. We, our mission is to advance the South Carolina economic development by helping small businesses to succeed. And one of the ways that we do that, we offer tools that they may not otherwise be available to get, such as Vertical IQ. It is a software that pulls information concerning each industry and each job. It's very informational, very helpful. We provide business plans, we help businesses with lenders, with banks, getting attorney referrals, accountants, all the fun things that go into having a small business. Now, the companies that we help are all for profit. While I do have information for nonprofit, as I was involved in that area, we don't, we don't take them on as clients. All of our clients are for-profit industries, everything from a startup to an established business to someone maybe selling their business. The services that we offer help businesses with marketing, web design, HR operations, every facet that you can imagine. The specialty services that we have, especially pertaining to Newberry, would be agriculture, cybersecurity, international trade, and governmental contracting. Now, those are specialists within our group, that's not me. My background is with the Department of Labor. I was an investigator with the State Department of Labor for 11 years, and prior to that I was a paralegal. So, the great part about our networking is we have 50 other consultants that have great backgrounds, and so if you know anybody that you can refer to me, I'd appreciate it. My card is attached to that flyer. I'd be happy to help anybody in our area, and if they're outside of our area, I can get them connected with the network in the area that they are in. So, does anybody have any questions?
Is there, is there a limit to the number of employees? Do they have to have like a minimum number?
No, no, no minimum number. We do, we are regulated by the SBA, the Small Business Association, and so we handle businesses by their definition of small business, like Samsung would not be a small business. But it goes up to 500 employees, which to me is not small, but, but we will take them and help them, so.
What are the businesses? Go ahead.
Lori, do you know Rick Farmer?
I do, and I've met with him, and he was the one who recommended I come before you today.
That's great, because it's good. I think even though you're kind of looking into taking care of small businesses, Rick's kind of looking at large industries.
Right.
But sometimes small industries, small businesses support large businesses.
Correct. He was, he was very happy to, to get our information, because then he had a place to send the smaller folks to.
Absolutely. So, it'd be very good if y'all could continue to coordinate, I think.
Definitely.
That would be work, work great.
And by the way, I do work from my home. We got kicked out of Newberry College because of the influx of students, so I do a lot of meetings either in person, at the, at the place of business, at the library, by Zoom, you know, I'm very flexible, so, and I'm happy to help any, anyone doing business in Newberry County.
Any other questions? Thank you. We look forward to working with you.
Thank you.
Item number four on our agenda is ordinance number 06022024, which is an ordinance establishing a building, fire, and nuisance code board of codes, Board of Appeals for the County of Newberry, SC. And it's my understanding that once ratified at the next meeting, that we would then make our appointments to that board, with each of us having one appointment to the board. Is that still correct, Mr. Shagger?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there a motion that this be third reading? Yes.
This, this. This is our first. We have a question.
Let's have you sound.
Okay. Let's make the motion. I'll take you as the second. Is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands and opposed likewise. Motion carries unanimously. All right, so by next meeting, we will have our appointments ready for them. Ordinance number 08012024, which is an ordinance authorizing Newberry County to sell real property identified as TMS 290-11 and described in the invitation for bid number 2024-4. We had that in our packets. Is there a motion that we have first reading? Motion by Mr. Shealy, this be second reading?
First reading.
First reading, I'm sorry. Thank you. Is there a second? I have my second and my second reading all wrapped around each other. Thank you. Mr. Hip makes the second to the motion, that this be first reading. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor by show of hands and opposed likewise. Motion carries unanimously. Item six, any action taken on the matters from executive session, none is needed. Item seven, appointments, Board of Zoning Appeals, District Six. Is that right?
Yes.
Okay. And then Joint Planning Commission, District Five.
I'd like to nominate Jack Shields for the Joint Planning Commission.
Mr. Hip nominates Jack Shields to the Joint Planning Commission. Is there a second?
I have a second.
Mr. Shealy seconds. That is their discussion. Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands and opposed likewise. Motion carries unanimously. Is anyone signed up for public comments? No one signed up for public comments. Number nine, comments and requests from the county administrator.
Yes, sir. I'll just give you a quick update on a few things. Of course, our CPST projects are, at least the design of them, are well underway. We've been having meetings with project architects and, of course, our construction manager that's, you know, looking out for our best interest in terms of those projects. And, you know, they're well underway. It looks like in terms of construction, you can expect to see construction in the first and beginning in the first and second quarter of next calendar year. That's at least the schedule now calls for that. And when we get closer to construction actually commencing, we'll bring to y'all a proposed ordinance to issue bonds to fund the projects. We can only do that so far in advance of the construction of the projects actually beginning and meet IRS code. I know that we've got a number of significant grant-funded projects that are underway. You know, Jesse and Recreation has three right now. You know, we've got a Recreation Trail Program Grant, a Parks and Recreation Development Fund Grant, and then a Community Forestry Grant from the South Carolina Forestry Commission that's been awarded to the county. All of those grants are focused on improvements that are being made to Lynch's Woods. There are trail improvements. There are biking and hiking facilities. There are informational resources like kiosks that will be added, other improvements as well. And then the Urban and Community Forestry Grant was there to do an assessment of the forest itself and identify any maintenance issues we might have there, hazard trees, you know, that kind of thing. And then we've got a couple of other projects, too. We've got a CDBG-funded sidewalk project I know we've talked a good bit about. That's the new sidewalk along Gary Street and Supertown Road. That has been designed and engineered. We've got some acquisition of property that's going to be necessary for the sidewalk. And the process that is used to acquire the property falls under the Uniform Relocation Act. It's a federal piece of legislation. The process we use will need to be approved by council, so that would be an item for y'all at the next meeting to sign off. And I'll give you more information on that in advance. But once we have that, we can bid the project, and, you know, we're hopeful that construction will be fairly rapid, at least in comparison to the preliminary work that was necessary to get us to that point. The other thing I'll mention, too, is, you know, another federal grant we were able to get is a Energy Efficiency Conservation Block Grant. This was federal money passed through the State Energy Office, and the focus of that is heating and air improvements that are more efficient to county buildings. And in an attempt to score as well as we could with the grant, we over-leveraged, so it's about a 50-50 funding. But these were improvements we needed to make to the buildings anyway. And, you know, y'all approved that funding as part of the budget process, and more specifically, it was approved within the facilities management budget. That's the Division of Public Works that Mac Barkley supervises. And a couple of the key properties, there are many buildings being addressed with the grant, but two of the key ones are this building we're in now, which has heating and air units that date back to the renovation of this building in the 90s, and community hall. And so I think we're going to have some needed upgrades to those buildings and also achieve some better energy consumption, at least related to heating and cooling. So I wanted just to mention those projects to you. And, of course, in the work session, we talked about a few more to pursue.
Okay. Thank you so much, Mr. Shak. Comments, requests from council, Reverend Curry?
Thanks, lovely.
Okay. Mr. Sees?
Just thank everybody for coming out. I know it's been a long meeting. One of our shorter ones, but appreciate the input and always welcome everybody to come to our meetings. And, you know, we can't think of everything, so if we miss something, we'd like to hear from the public and give us more ideas on ordinances and things we need to do in the county. So thank you for coming out.
Mr. Hip?
Yes, I would like to recognize Mr. Stuart Smith, who's here this evening, who is unopposed to take my job once I retire. And I'll be retiring at the end of this year, and I'm sure I'll leave it an ample hand. So I'm glad to see you here, Stuart, and you can observe and learn and do a better job than I have.
Expect to know everything you know.
But then the other thing, Jeff, last time we had a situation where we had four ambulances and some fire trucks that were out of service because they were getting work done. What is the status of those?
Well, there was a good bit of stepped-up work that was done by our, the company that we contract with for vehicle maintenance, and I know they've made significant headway on it. I wish I could tell you the numbers. I know they got the ambulances back on the road. I tell you what, I'll check on that and give y'all a report in the morning.
That would be good if you could email us, because that was a very concerning thing for me to have that many emergency vehicles unavailable. So, and I'd also like to know, I think Tommy indicated that he was going to find some backup maintenance services whenever our current contract could not fulfill all they needed to do to keep those vehicles on the road. And I'd like to know what the status of that is, too.
I'll include that in the email. And we, not long after that council meeting, I think it was early the following week, we actually met with the contractor over the garage and had those discussions, both the needing to address the repair of the trucks, the current issues that we have, and then also our backup plans that we have to send work out, so that we've got more than just the current options.
Okay. Thank you.
Mr. Fulmer?
Yes, certainly like to welcome everybody tonight. Thank you for coming out and taking part in your county government, for sure. And anyway, it is certainly a pleasure to serve, serve with these folks on the county council, but also to serve the citizens of Newberry County. Along those lines of what Mr. Hip had asked about, we had a fire truck that we were in the midst of trying to get purchased. Where are we with that?
We've issued the purchase order, and it's under construction.
Okay. All right, so that has been sealed, the deal has been?
It has, yeah.
That's good.
And then, you know, we've got a tanker also that will need to be replaced. We had an accident that occurred, and we've got the insurance, the amount of the insurance claim in, in terms of the truck and the equipment. And I know that Tommy had a, Mr. Long had a demo truck that was here on Tuesday, no, I'm sorry, on Monday. Monday. And they took a look at it. At this point, what he would recommend council consider is a tanker that would have the capabilities of actually putting out a fire. You know, a lot of times it's referred to as a pumper tanker. It's just got a, you know, stronger pump on it, and so he's exploring those options. And we'll keep y'all posted on that. There's no question, though, the cost of the truck's going to exceed the insurance claim, which is around $170,000. So, you know, a new tanker, you're talking about more than half of that.
And I can give a little more info. I went to Bush River Fire Department meeting last night, and they had the specs on the truck and the actual drawings and stuff. There's a couple of them coming down the line that will be available. And instead of us waiting for a year or two if we ordered one, so we're kind of lucky there. So they're looking at what they can do and spec it, and it's be pretty close to what they need. And it'd be good for us that we can get one that's already on the line, that somebody dropped off the line, just like this other truck, and it's not going to cost us an additional amount if we order it that day. So that's a good thing. So they're working on that.
And like the engine, that particular vendor is on state contracts.
That's right.
In terms of the procedure.
It appears. And that's the one they, the demo one they brought down and showed them, but that was already, that was already been sold, I believe. That quick.
Okay. Mr. Shealy?
Thank you, Rob, for coming out. Jeff, excellent job going out and finding opportunities, and your vision that you have for the county is excellent, and we appreciate all you have done and are doing and will do.
All right. I would enjoy that. The worst thing about last is sometimes you repeat things. But first, I'd say happy birthday to Andrew. We let him have the evening off. Today's Andrew Weaver's birthday, so he's out enjoying that. So happy birthday to him. Stuart, what a blessing, Councilman-elect, a blessing to have you with us tonight, and you got some huge shoes to fill, not big shoes, huge shoes to fill. So I look forward to working with you into the future. And then again, I would, I said it in the earlier meeting, Jeff, I just commend you on the funding and the vision and balancing a number of those projects and not getting myopic on one to the point that you lose vision on the others. And that's a commendable trait. You also know resources and how to leverage those, and that's a blessing to Newberry County. So I thank you. I thank you for what you're doing.
Yeah, thank you.
Future meetings, county council work session on August 21st at 5:00. Council meeting August 21st at 6:00. Finance committee meets August 26th at 6:00 p.m. Labor Day's coming up, September the 2nd, and then county council work session September 4th at 5:00 p.m., followed by a council meeting at 6:00 p.m. Is anything else from anyone? Their motion to adjourn, Mr. Shealy makes the motion to adjourn, Mr. Fulmer makes the second, is there discussion? Hearing none, all in favor by show of hands, all opposed likewise. The motion carries unanimously, and we stand adjourned.